Thank you. I want to introduce to you now Charles Taylor. Charles serves the City of Sanford in Ward Two. He is just in the process of completing his first term as a city councilman. He is not seeking, he does not have opposition, but he's seeking reelection.
Typically typical developing and also special needs. And they're a great function, that they're a great cause. But I would never, as a member of city council, say that I have the right to take your tax dollars and give them to her charity. Or to the temple. Or to a golf course. I frankly don't know how anybody on city council could say that they want to give city government funds, taxpayer dollars, to a charity. If you decided that was important, why are you then funding a golf course? But I don't believe that that is the right of a city government to take your money, the money of your employer, private funds, and spend them on charity. Now, if you have a charitable organization that can do a city government function better, cheaper, more effectively than city government's currently doing, and I'm all in favor of privatizing that through an organization like that. But being charitable with other people's money is not charity.
Thank you. And a final question. What specific needs of Ward Four do you feel haven't been addressed by the city council? And how would you address them if you were elected?
Well, they're very much the same as meet the city at large. But we're having a persistent crime problem. Now, I don't know. The statistics wouldn't show that we compare favorably to towns our size. I don't think that that's a relevant point, but that's come up a lot in these forums. The point is that we can do better. The point is that we can, as a city council, promote an atmosphere in our police department that says, when you charge a case, you're not done. You're not done as a police department until that case has reached its conclusion, whether it's the acquittal of an innocent person, whether it's the conviction of a guilty one. But we currently have an attitude, and I believe it has to start with the city council, by giving the resources appropriate to change this attitude, that our current attitude is, well, we've charged the case, we've established probable cause, and we're done. I'm not telling you anything you don't know when I say that probable cause is not sufficient to convict. Every case takes beyond a reasonable doubt. When you have a police department whose job is to investigate the case, that doesn't necessarily put a priority on collecting enough evidence to get to beyond a reasonable doubt, hands the case off, and then is nowhere to be seen because they've moved on to the next thing, you have a DA that's in court with no officer there in court to help them, playing poker without seeing their cards. Because in 99% of your cases, the officer is your evidence. Their testimony is your evidence. And I speak from experience that without knowing what that officer's going to say on the stand, because they're not in court that day, you take the best offer you can get and you move to the next case.
Okay. Those are the questions now. Two minutes for your closing statement.
Thank you. I believe that we have to put a priority on seeing our cases through to conclusion. And what that means is having the resources available to our patrolmen who do not make that decision. That decision of where they're going to be on a given day, whether it's in court or off doing something else, is not their decision. It is a command decision. And if we don't have the resources currently for them to be in court on their assigned court days and see their case through to conclusion, that has to change. And we have to refocus our priorities away from things like golf courses and charitable causes, which if we return your taxpayer dollars to you, you can support, and we should, we can refocus them on the things the city government should be doing. Ask for your vote.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here. We will now move into the Ward Five race between David and Rebecca, if you'll make your way up. This is the Ward Five race between two challengers for a seat that's being vacated, David Nester and Rebecca Wyhoff. And we will start in alphabetical order, sorry Rebecca, with David Nester first with opening statements, and that's two minutes.
Okay. Well, thank you, Bill. And I appreciate you all being here. This is important, and I often feel that not enough people assume it to be important. So I am glad to see you all here. Why am I running? You know, I'm about creating an environment in which the city, its citizens prosper and improve their quality of life. I have, for a majority of my life, been a small business owner, creating budgets, meeting budgets, making payroll. I know what it is to serve. Serving our community. I currently serve as the chairman of Job Ready. That supports career and technical education at our schools. That creates jobs. That makes our community more attractive to industry. I serve as a Historic Preservation Commissioner. EDC, or Economic Development nowadays, is taking on a broader meaning. It's quality of life issues, it's parks, it's historic districts, it's downtowns. I believe those things are important. I am a deacon and a youth leader in my church, and without my faith in God, guys, I can't do this job. I need to have that ultimate direction in my life. I am a Rotary member, serving in Character Plus, which reaches out to fourth and fifth graders. That's a civic club. We need to be involved in our communities through these civic clubs. I am an EDC board member. With the EDC, we are continuing to try to attract industry to our community. And there's a lot of talk about incentives, but that's not the only way we attract our businesses. I would like to continue to serve Sanford, Jonesboro, Ward Five, and I do promise to do so 110%. Please vote. David Nester, Ward Five. Thanks.
Thank you, David. Rebecca, two minutes.
Well, first, I'd like to thank the Sanford Herald for hosting this event. It's great, really, to see this many people here to talk about the future of our community. My name is Rebecca Wyhoff, and I am running for the Ward Five seat on the Sanford City Council. I have a master's degree in public administration, 15 years of diverse public sector work experience, and am currently serving as the vice president of the North Carolina Telecommunications Industry Association. But most importantly, I love the city of Sanford, and I live in the heart of Ward Five in historic Jonesboro. I'm running for the city council because I believe the residents of Ward Five need a voice on the issues that are important to them and their families. These tough economic times really call for leaders who are willing to work hard, ask tough questions, and seek solutions that balance quality of life and sound financial stewardship. My top priorities are the revitalization of Jonesboro, economic development, public safety, and open responsive government. Despite recent challenges, I believe that the greater Jonesboro area is full of promise and possibility. We need a livable, aesthetically pleasing, and most of all, safe environment for the residents who live here. We are all in this together, which is why having a strong cohesive economic development strategy is so vital for our future. We need to promote a vibrant downtown, work to sustain current businesses and world-class industries while really working towards future growth. And through open responsive government and active citizen participation, we will continue to develop our infrastructure, to support a climate that encourages job creation, and foster a quality of life that keeps and attracts our most valuable resource, our people, which is, after all, what this election is about. I'm asking you for your support and your vote this election. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Question number one is the same question we posed in the first segment. I'm going to start off with three questions in one. You have two minutes to answer one, two, or all three of these. And Rebecca, we will start with you first. What makes a good city councilman? What makes an effective city council? And why will the Sanford City Council be better with you as a member?
To me, I believe it really starts with listening, to really understand the concerns and the aspirations of the people, both in our district and in the city as a whole. And I think a really effective city council person can take those concerns and aspirations and really translate that into action, be an advocate in those times when people really do need a voice. I also believe that we need, as a council, to take that and look forward into the future and be able to figure out where does our city need to be in the future, think out of the box, work together as a team to make that vision a reality, and balance those quality of life issues with really core and strong, sound financial stewardship.
Thank you. David, same question?
What it takes to be a good city councilman and why I'm fit for that. I've proven in the 10 years that I've been involved in the city that I do listen. I do take in input from others. I do work on boards. We do reach agreements. We do get things done. We need to be careful that we don't make promises to do too many projects. What we really need to do is get on board and get one thing done and get one thing done right. And that, in turn, gives hope to our community. That, in turn, makes people think positively about the community they live in, and then they can move forward. I also believe in continuity on the council. I believe that there are times when you are going to maybe not end up supporting something that fellow councilmen feel passionate about, and you're going to have to go their way. So there is a give and take. We do have to look to our future. Water is a subject. We have to look 10, 15, 20 years down the road, just like those that came before us did. And that's one reason that we are sitting so well today.
Thank you. Next question, and David, you'll be going first on this. Each of you has had experience with events and event marketing and publicity. Marketing and tourism have been discussed by years by numerous organizations and in many community-wide initiatives, yet there is still no centralized marketing tourism effort for Sanford and Lee County. How should the city council address that?
The city council is really in the best position at this point in time to get it kicked off. And yes, that means some funds. That means the city putting funds forward to create a visitors bureau or a tourism bureau. We've got a lot of individual folks in town doing great things, whether it's out in the county Old Mill Crankup, whether it's pottery festivals, whether it's Lions Club doing the regional fair, whether it's recently the Jubilee that happened downtown. The problem is, is that when those events take place, they're just underattended. Our music in the park at Depot Park, room for 1,000 people, we're lucky to get 200, 300 there. Once we get people activated into these things and people start taking part in it, you may not have to fund a tourism authority anymore or a visitor's center. But I think we do really need to get it kicked off. We need to tell people how great of a community we have. Currently, or I shouldn't say currently, but the Lee County Fair is my best example. That event went off, and if you traveled down Highway One or Horner Boulevard, you did not know it existed. We need to advertise how great a community we are.
Thank you. Rebecca?
Okay. I think we do really need to have a strong promotion here in Sanford. I actually think we need to step it back a second and actually do some promotion even on the nuts and bolts items that we have in town. I've talked to a number of people that have recently moved here. They're still sort of discovering our treasures that we have here, our great dining, our shopping, our cultural events. And we really need to be able to have a central place that people can find up-to-date information about some of those nuts and bolt issues so that they want to stay here. They want to spend their money and have a good time on the weekend right here in their own town. We also, I think, would benefit from a visitors bureau, and I think that we really do need to figure out how to make sure that those both follow traditional means, newer means like social media, and ways to get that to people who are coming in at all different levels. I do want to be mindful of doing it a way that is, you know, careful with our money, that we're not spending it in the wrong places, but I do think that it's something that will enhance our community a lot.
Okay, thank you. Question number three, and Rebecca, we'll start with you, two minutes. This is the same water question I asked in the first segment. The city of Sanford is in an enviable position when it comes to water. Because we're in such positive circumstance, the city is considering selling excess water capacity to other communities. Is this a good or bad idea, and why?
Okay. I really do believe that we are lucky to be in the position we are in with water. And I believe that we are stronger in this position when we are the regional water supplier. I think that that is a way for us to have a better handle on keeping our rights long-term. I do think that we, that selling water is a good idea. I think that it can help us recoup some of the costs that we put into our infrastructure. But I also do believe that we have got to make sure that whatever contracts we put together, look out for the long-term best interests of our own citizens right here in Sanford. So there has to be some way to get out of the contracts if it becomes burdensome or unwise for our own people here in Lee County in the future.
Thank you. David?
The water question. It's not luck at all where we're at today. We've had some great folks that had forethought, that said, we need to go ahead and stop taking water out of Sand Lee Park, and let's go ahead and start taking it out of the river so we've got capacity for industry, for home building, and for the citizens of Sanford and Lee County. Currently, even if we're at 50% usage out of the existing system, in 15 years with a 3% growth, we're building another system. The other thing that I believe is that there's no way that if we were to sell our water to Pittsburgh or anywhere else in Chatham County, that if we were to sell it, that they would sign any contract to purchase it if they knew we could cut it off in three to five years. They're not going to tell their homeowner, oh, by the way, we're shutting your water off at the end of this year. We're going to tell our industry, we're going to shut your water off at the end of the year. We need to preserve our water and sewer resources so we can attract the industry, so we can attract the home builders. We've got 1,000 lots sitting out there right now with no homes sitting on them. We need to be able to attract those folks to our county because of the resources we have.
All right, thank you. Question number four, David, we'll start with you, two minutes. In the questionnaire you completed for the Herald, you stated that you believe there were a large number of crimes being committed in the city which were unreported, and that residents in your ward were disenchanted when it came to the topic of crime. What would you specifically do to address these concerns?
Whether it's been Jonesboro, whether it's been Woodbridge, whether it's been East Sanford or around my neighborhood on the north end of Sanford, I've run into citizens that talk about the crime that happens in their neighborhoods, whether it's cars that are speeding down Frazier at 50 miles an hour, whether it's weed eaters being taken off their front porches, whether it's fights not being broke up. What has happened is that, and I said it before and I'll say it again, 50, 60 years ago, our police officers started handing out speeding tickets that made them the bad guy. What we really need to do is get our officers out of their cars. They need to start knocking on some doors, not unlike we do when we're looking for votes. Knock on the doors, check with people, tell them that I'm here to serve you. If you have a problem, let me know about it. The second thing I would do is take that mobile precinct that we've got, let's move it out to the hotspots. Let's put it where the problems exist. I guarantee you, you park that thing on Frazier Drive, cars will slow down. I guarantee you, you take it over to the east side, park it at Third and Maple, the, I'll just say, the crimes will stop happening that are happening there currently. We need to just get out and get in touch with the community.
Thank you. Rebecca, this is for you, two minutes. In the questionnaire you completed for the Herald, you cited the need for a livable, aesthetically pleasing Jonesboro area. What will you be able to do to accomplish that goal that sitting members of the council have not been able to do?
I think that, and I appreciate the question, this really gets to the heart of what I think the people that I've been talking to in Jonesboro are looking for. A place that they can come, do their shopping, eat, and enjoy. But it's very hard for people to get around there right now. Parts of it have been improved. There's obviously a parking lot has been purchased. But there needs to be easier ways to get around for people. We need to put in more crosswalks. We need to make sure that the sidewalks actually connect through so that people can walk through the area much easier. We need to make sure that it's safe with better street lighting. And we also need to move forward on the plans that have been made and outlined in the master plan for both downtown and for Jonesboro. If you haven't had a chance to look at those, if they come out to their completion, that streetscape project extends all the way down into Jonesboro. And you would see a place that people would want to get together, be proud of, and want to be able to participate as a community center right there for that neighborhood. And I think it's something that people are really looking for, and they're hoping for leadership from people like the city council to make that happen.
All right, thank you very much. Next question. Rebecca, we'll start with you. This is the EDC jobs question. On average, about one in every eight households in Lee County has someone who's unemployed living there. Lee County commissioners have spent a great deal of time addressing the work and function of the EDC, which the city helps fund. What's your opinion of the city's role in recent discussions about the EDC? And what can the city council do to help create an environment conducive to job growth?
Okay. First and foremost, Lee County is a very small county. And when we're going out and trying to recruit jobs and industry, we really do need to be on the same page. We really do need to have a coordinated economic development strategy that encompasses both the city and the county. To me, that would really be something that, first and foremost, really does make good economic sense, that is fair to our existing small businesses and industries, but really can attract new jobs at the same time, and is accountable and measurable for people. And I think that if we can get together and decide on that with civility, really putting the community's best interests ahead of any personal agendas, we're going to make strides on creating an environment that will invite investment and thus in turn create jobs. And I think that the city and the county can really take the leadership on making that happen.
Thank you. David?
The EDC currently is a member of the Triangle Regional Partnership. We do work in conjunction with the other counties in recruiting businesses, as well as work with the state in recruiting business. We need to continue to make ourselves appealing. The economic development, as I said before, involves more than just incentives. It involves parks, it involves quality of life issues. We need to continue as we are doing. I know the argument has been going back and forth, and it is an argument. There are some people that are upset. We need to quell that. It's given us bad press. We need to sit down. City needs to come up with a plan. If the city's been guilty of one thing, they have not gotten back to the county and said, this is what we want to see, and this is where we're going to draw the line. We need to get this thing settled, be done with, and get back to recruiting industry.
All right, thank you. David, next question. We'll start with you, two minutes. This question deals with the streetscape plan the city is considering and improvements in downtown. Downtown Sanford Incorporated has been awarded $400,000 from the city of Sanford and has gone to the city council with its recommendations for improvements. Are you aware of these recommendations by Downtown Sanford? And what are your thoughts on getting those implemented?
Very much aware to it. They did invite us candidates in to talk to them about their plan. It looks great, I mean, both Jonesboro and Downtown Sanford. It would do a lot to bring us up to par with other historic districts. When I was down in Greenville, they've got wonderful sidewalks, wonderful plantings, wonderful, the curbs actually go out into the street, slowing traffic down. Signage is wonderful. It is something I'd love to see happen. What we've got to be careful of is underfunding a program like this or trying to do it all with too little. What we really need to do is decide on what the budget the city is going to allow us to have. Currently, the $400,000 is basically going to get planning taken care of and maybe some permitting, but that's as far as it's going to go. If we're going to do it, there is an $8 million budget to do everything. If that doesn't come to be, then we've got to decide which piece of it we're going to do. The worst thing we can do is try to grab and do, start the whole project. The whole project, if we start it, will just be a mess. We need to go ahead and grab a chunk of it and get it done. Or we've just got to go ahead and say, we're going to go ahead and put out a bond and leave it up to the people to decide if they want to spend the $8 million.
Okay.
I am aware of it as well. I think the $400,000 is a good start to get that planning done. It does make us more prepared to take advantage of grants if they do come up, although that funding is drying up these days as well. But I am also cautious of doing anything where people never get to see any tangible results for the money that they're spending. And I think this project is in danger of being one of those projects that just takes forever if we do it piecemeal, 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 and nothing ever gets done. People also don't like to see streets eternally under construction. We want to be able to use our downtown and enjoy it the way that it is intended to be done in the master plan. So I do think that we need to figure out a way, whether that is through a bond, whether that is through other types of funding mechanisms, to actually take a big leap forward. If that's, you know, part of our community conversation decides that that is what we want to do, we need to just go ahead and do it and use that to really maximize the opportunities we'll have to get Sanford out in the forefront to take advantage of future growth. So I hope we can move forward quickly on actually getting something started.
Okay, thank you. This is the last question, and it's the question that we asked previously about funding to nonprofit agencies. How should the city approach providing funding to nonprofit agencies and organizations such as Temple Theater? Rebecca, we'll start with you.
Okay. This is a really difficult question. I think that it pulls on a lot of different needs that we all want to see in a city. But in general, I don't believe that government should be in the position of making charitable donations. Those are the purview of individuals to decide what they really value and what they want to fund. I do, however, think that there are situations where nonprofits' jobs align with exactly what the city's mission and strategy is. And if they can do that job better and more effectively and more efficiently than we can, we shouldn't be duplicating services. We shouldn't be in the business of trying to do what a nonprofit can do better. And in those cases, I do believe that it may be appropriate to provide funding if the budget allows for those nonprofits. But I don't think that there is a magical policy that's going to be a one-size-fits-all thing going forward.
Thank you. David?
I am a firm believer in establishing either a matrix or Rubik, something that's going to lay out some parameters for a nonprofit. Currently, we have been funding the Temple Theater. The Temple Theater, nobody would argue, is a gem that we have downtown. We certainly don't want to see that go away. Neither do we want to see our parks go away, or do we want to see the indoor trail go away. Or many people don't want to see the golf course go away. They can all essentially be lumped in together. They are a service to our community. They are something that increases the quality of life in our community. Back to my economic development. And economic development anymore is not just incentives. It's about presenting a town that is acceptable to industry when they come.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll now move into closing statements, and we're going to go in reverse order from how we started with opening statements. So Rebecca, you'll get to go first. Closing statements, two minutes.
Great. Once again, I do want to thank the Sanford Herald for hosting this forum. I am running for the Sanford City Council because I truly believe that the residents of Ward Five need a voice on those issues that are most important to them and their families. I will listen, and I will be a strong, independent voice for you. My priorities are the revitalization of Jonesboro, economic development, public safety, and open responsive government. I come to you with 15 years of diverse public sector work experience, a degree from the UNC School of Government, but most importantly, I come to you with an open mind. I will go the extra mile to listen to you, to involve you in the process. I will represent your concerns on the council, speak up for the current and future needs of Ward Five, and I will vote my conscience. I invite you to continue this conversation. I would love to talk more with you about your aspirations for our community. Together, we will develop our infrastructure, support a climate that supports job creation, and foster a quality of life that does keep and attract our most valuable resource, our people, which is what this is about. I'm Rebecca Wyhoff, and I am asking for your support and your vote this November. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. David?
As well, thank you all for coming tonight. And I do feel I am best suited to support you, proven it with the service that I already give to our community. I have been, as I said before... I have been, as I said before, a private business owner. I know what it takes to make tough decisions in budgets and jobs. I do believe that there are good times ahead. We're currently in this recession, but it is going to get better. I've seen it happen three times in my life, and we will come out of this. We will come out better. I do believe I can support Sanford, Jonesboro, Ward Five. It's fun, when I started thinking about running in Ward Five, I was thinking Jonesboro and realized the first building I ever bought in Sanford was in the middle of Jonesboro, down on Keith Drive. And it's been a wonderful building for me. The tenants are great. It's a wonderful community. We can't ignore the fact, however, that the Latino community is probably 20% of that ward, and I know from knocking on doors, they're there. Over 60% of the businesses in Kendall Plaza are also the Latino community. They're here to stay as well. We certainly don't want them to leave. We'd have a ghost town. So I am here to ask for your vote. I'm David Nester, and see you at the polls.
Thank you very much. Please join me, and thank you, man, for being here. We will take a 10-minute break and get started back with the at-large race right at eight o'clock.